It is. Hello. It is 5:00 PM on October 3rd, 2022, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And I want to welcome everyone that is in person and also viewing online or through any social outlet. The first item on our agenda is going to be capital projects update. And we're going to invite Scott up to get us started. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Scott Sovers. I am Assistant City Engineer in the Engineering Division. Tonight, I'm going to provide you with a brief update on the scope, status, and estimated construction cost, or estimated completion date, excuse me, for the 2022 capital improvement projects. The first project on the list is the American Legion Road Improvements Project. This project generally includes the complete reconstruction of American Legion Road from Scott Boulevard to Taft Avenue. More specifically, the project includes street pavement replacement, the addition of a single lane roundabout at the Scott Boulevard intersection, sidewalks on both sides of the street, all new public utilities, and a pedestrian tunnel near Hoover School. Currently, the roundabout and street pavement from Scott Boulevard to the east of Arlington Drive is complete. We are anticipating that all work, with the exception of the Taft Avenue intersection and permanent seating along the entire corridor to be finished yet this year with final completion in the spring of 2023. The next project is the First Avenue and Scott Boulevard Intersection Improvements Project. This intersection reconstruction project generally includes the construction of a single lane roundabout with all new sidewalk and public utilities. Currently, we are estimating the project to be roughly 90% complete. Remaining work generally includes sidewalk sidewalks on basically all sides of the roundabout, and then the final street connections at the Scott Boulevard west of First Avenue and then the First Avenue to the south. These connections will require our 14-day intersection closure, which is planned to start later this week, excuse me, later this week. Weather permitting, all work will be finished up late October.
I have to say that that one really does look almost complete. I go by it a couple of times a day, and it's made huge progress.
Yeah, we're getting there. It's just it's taking some time. We had some utility conflicts that kind of slowed the progress down, but we're they're really starting to make some progress now, so. That brings us to the 2022 asphalt resurfacing project. This project includes the resurfacing and ADA ramp replacements at Taylor Drive, Bancroft Drive, Crosby Lane, Rundell Street, Laura Muscatine Road, and Bloomington Street. Also included in this project is the refreshing of the chip seal surfacing on Taft Avenue, Taft Speedway, Sycamore Street, North Dubuque Road, Scott Park Road, and Meyer Avenue. We're estimating we're roughly 80% complete with the project. Remaining streets to be resurfaced are Bancroft Drive and Crosby Lane. And these are currently under progress right now. Anticipate completion date for this project is mid to late November. Next project is the Northwestminster Storm Sewer Improvements. This project includes storm sewer, street, and sidewalk replacement on both Northwestminster and Washington Street. Currently, the majority of the work on Washington Street has been completed. There's just some final service, topsoiling and service restoration needs to be completed, but that, all intents and purposes, Washington Street is done. The contractor is currently focusing efforts on storm sewer, street, sidewalk, and driver replacements on Northwestminster. Weather permitting, the anticipated substantial completion date for this project is late November. The Second Avenue Bridge Replacement Project includes the replacement of the bridge itself, sidewalk, trail, and driveways as well as there's a portion of sidewalk infill on the east side of Second Avenue from the bridge to, Bridge South to F Street. This project was substantially completed and open to both vehicular and pedestrian traffic in late August. Next project is the Melrose Avenue IWV Improvements. In addition to road reconstruction, this project included the replacement of the existing storm sewer and culverts with the extension of a new water main from Slothower Road to the Iowa City landfill. Currently, the project is 90% complete with final service restoration remaining, which should be just some fine grading and seating. We anticipate this project will be wrapped up sometime late October. Rochester Avenue Improvements. This project generally includes the reconstruction of Rochester Avenue from Ralston Creek to First Avenue. This is a multi-year project. Included in this project is street, sidewalk, and driver replacement, replacement of the traffic signals at First Avenue, and new storm and water main, storm sewer and water main. Weather permitting, the portion of the project between Ralston Creek and Rochester Court is anticipated to be complete late November. Completion of the overall project is planned for the spring of 2024. The next project is the Orchard Street Improvements. This project includes a replacement of public utilities, street, sidewalk, and driveways from Benton Street to US Highway 1. Also included in this project is sidewalk infill on the east side of Orchard Street along with the addition of pedestrian signals at the Orchard and US Highway 1 intersection. Currently remaining work generally includes street and sidewalk paving and final service restoration from Douglas Court, excuse me, Douglas Street to the Harbor Freight entrance. Weather permitting, the project is anticipated to be substantially complete and open to vehicular and pedestrian traffic in early November. And then I guess in looking ahead, there are a few projects that we bid this year with flexible schedules that will likely not start until next year, or will start this year with the bulk of the work happening next year. They include Benton Street rehabilitation, Fairchild Street reconstruction, and the Highway 6 trail extension. Other projects that we will be bidding this winter for 2023 construction are the Gilbert Street Bridge reconstruction and the Dubuque Street improvements. A few of the larger, more impactful projects that we will be in planning and design phases next year include the reconstruction of Court Street, Taft Avenue, Park Road, and Gilbert Street. Additionally, concept planning and design for the Burlington Street Bridge replacement will also start next year. Currently, funding for the construction of this project is programmed for 2028. So this project's a little ways out, but we need to get started on the concept planning early on. So all this assumes that the planned 2023 through 2027 capital improvements project budget is approved through council early next year.
Is the Burlington Street Bridge, that's in partnership with the state? Is that right?
Yep, with the state, and then other folks that'll be stakeholder list will be the University of Iowa as well. So that's what I have for project updates. I'd be happy to open it up to any questions anybody has, or I can flip back to any of the projects, and we can talk through those as well.
So on Rochester Street, the plan is to finish that piece and then reopen Rochester until the spring?
Yep, yep. So it'll be on hard surface through the winter. So all traffic control would be removed from the street.
And maybe I did see the social media announcement about the closing of Scott and First. Maybe a reminder of where the detour is, especially because Rochester is closed down, so that might be something to...
So the detour will be Court Street over to Muscatine and then Burlington, and then Dodge or Governor, depending on which direction you're going, back up around, so.
Thank you.
Have you run into any real issues with any of these projects that have either pushed them back or that are like regular recurring issues, so that just so that...
Yeah, so one of the issues we've had on a number of our projects is just, well, there's a couple of issues. One of them is just contractors are really busy right now, and so they're trying to jump from project to project, and that's caused quite a bit of delay on most of our projects. The other thing that we've been dealing with is private utility conflicts and getting private utility companies to move their facilities when they're in conflict with our proposed improvements within public right of way. So that's been a challenge. So they've been as busy as well. So it's, everybody's just trying to work as hard as they can to get the, get things done, but that has caused delays.
How are the supply chain issues for some of these projects?
That is another challenge. We recently had a pre-construction meeting for, I believe it was for the Benton Street project, and the contractor told us for the water main material, the pipe, the ductile iron pipe, it's 60 weeks out.
Six zero?
Six zero weeks.
Wow.
So they're hopeful they can get it before then, but they said conservatively you should plan on 60 weeks. So it's hard, that's probably one of the other things that we've seen as far as delays is just material delays and then increase in pricing on materials.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. All right, any more discussion on that, councilors? All right, we're going to move on to clarification of agenda items.
In our consent agenda, I just want to, I guess, pull out, but just for a brief description of item 6F, which has to do with the Mercer Park upgrades that are going to be happening. And it's more just to be able to provide that information out. I know that there's been confusion about what parts of Parks and Rec master plan is, you know, happening and when. And so it's just more to be able to pull it out and explain, nothing as far as a vote or any, anything like that.
I would recommend maybe two ways to do it. You can certainly during council discussion kind of highlight it, but I'm sure any of our staff would also be...
Julie Seidel Johnson is here, and so would be able to offer clarification either now or then, whichever is your preference.
Do you prefer?
Or both.
I, yeah.
If there's going to be a whole lot of detailed clarification, I would recommend that we do that at the formal so that those who are going to be tuning in can see that.
That's my preference, just to help, you know, with communication and make sure that folks know the cool stuff that's going to be happening for Mercer. So, thank you.
Be ready. All right.
Yeah, and I just, on 6B, I just wanted to point out that the city has used Carney Applebee for some time, but they decided to rebid it as a lobbying firm in Des Moines. They decided to rebid it, and they got three bids, and they looked at them and decided they still should go with this firm, but they took a look to see if there was somebody else that they should consider, which is...
And I think what I might do, if I remember, after I, before I have public discussion, I'm going to ask that you come up on 6F. Okay, great. Since you've already acknowledged that you want to talk about it. All right, any other thing from the formal? We will move on to information packets.
Can I ask one more quick question?
Absolutely.
On item 10, which is the rare south trunk sanitary sewer, is what are all the landowners in that area already being notified that this is going to happen because it's going to have a major impact?
Yeah, we've been in close coordination with most of all the property owners, not only just on the Abbey Lane piece, but also west of 218, so everybody's very familiar with the project.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to information packet, September 22nd. We know that we have the Happy Hollow that's in this information packet number two that we'll discuss. Before we go there, is there any other item from this packet? Okay. All right, so maybe I'll ask staff to just give us a, maybe a review if they desire on this one. Great, hello and welcome.
So the item refers to the small ball field at Happy Hollow Park. It was a skinned or agri-lime baseball field until about 2019. At that time, staff removed the agri-lime and made it a grass field similar to other T-ball fields throughout the community. That's the primary use of that field is T-ball with a few rentals throughout the summer. There was neighborhood interest in possibly changing that back, so we had Snyder and Associates come out and do another public meeting in the park. You have that information from that public meeting, and then it went to the Parks Commission, who recommended that it be held until we do the park renovations in a few years. The question is really a neighborhood level versus a system level question. The neighbors around Happy Hollow have a very strong interest in it returning to being a skinned baseball field. System-wide, staff and use would point to it being adequate as it is as a grass field, and we looked at equity and efficiency of staff time. Staff recommendation would be to keep it that way.
All right, any questions for Julie? Thank you. All right. Now, I know that I was on council when this first came up, and I think I saw the date. It goes back to 2020, when we first had our discussion on this item. And since then, we've had, I saw the timeline of all the meetings that has been brought to council, also all the work that the staff has done in partnership with Snyder to really, you know, kind of go with what is it that the public want, and just seeking out some of those comments. While I do absolutely appreciate our staff, and I do understand where they're coming from with the workload as they've described it, this is one where I do see an opportunity where we could return this back, where it can be used by a variety of people. When I look at, you know, Mercer Park, that is definitely, you know, a desire park. It has all of the things there. It's, and when you're talking about maintenance, it's all there. So I do understand the ease of it all. But I think that there is something to be said about kind of this one-off, in a way. This small space where it has a different feel for people in the community. And then the other thing is the maintenance was one of the major things that I know the council talked about. How are we going to maintain this? And I do understand hauling stuff, and that's never any fun. But I am confident that, you know, staff can figure out how to maintain it. The other thing that I might say is, I'm looking through the comments on, you know, with some of the individuals that would like to see this returned, you know, there might be an appetite where staff can maybe even kind of joint efforts to maintain this park or this ball field. So I am more inclined to direct staff to return it, and just wanted to see what my fellow councilors have to say.
Well, I will just add a couple of comments. One of them has to do with that systems aspect that Julie mentioned, because I, one thing that I've been working on over the last couple of months in terms of trying to understand this issue is sort of pull back and look at what, how cities typically address the question of ball fields. And what I found in that research was that I could not find a city that relied strictly on its multi-field complexes to serve the needs of all those who wish to play baseball, whether formally or informally. They always had to complement their complexes at least one ball field in a neighborhood park. And so it's, and that's, what are the reasons for that? The reasons are that these types of facilities, ball fields and neighborhood parks, serve all kinds of people and all kinds of groups, whether it's organized competition, practice, informal pickup. It's a kind of more open-ended use of the field, not just by the neighbors, it's by the city as a whole. It is, Happy Hollow was, before the the grass infield was installed, the only neighborhood ball field in Iowa City. So we, at this time, have no neighborhood park with a baseball field at the moment. And I think that was, that's where the comments were coming from, which were not just from the neighbors, by the way. It was, we heard from the Little Hawks Baseball Club, who said they would love to see the baseball field back. And in fact, they seem to be kind of pinched between the Iowa City boys' baseball teams and access to a place to play because of the competition for the fields at City Park. So that was one reason. They were really keen on Happy Hollow because they felt that they could use that field for their six, seven, and eight-year-olds, and also that they felt it could serve as a practice field for the other teams. So that sort of speaks to exactly the kinds of things that I was seeing, being the purpose behind these fields. And, you know, the mayor mentioned the idea of the volunteerism. The Little Hawks felt so passionately about this, they said, "Look, we're interested in volunteering if we need to, to make this thing work." And what I've found is that too seems to be, there's precedent for that, even within the Iowa City metro area, in that the Iowa City Community School District has a couple of schools, elementary schools, Penn and Weber, where in their outdoor areas, they have a skinned infield and a soccer field configuration with nets installed. So they have the shared field concept. And at least at Weber, the field is maintained by volunteers. I didn't have a chance to check into Penn, but I suspect it's the same configuration. So I think a number of the issues that were raised in terms of staff's concerns about the added maintenance, I think there is potential for addressing it through volunteerism. And I think I would just finish by, you know, I haven't really referenced the survey information. It was pretty compellingly oriented towards restoring the infield by the numbers. 25 in favor, two in favor of restoration, two in favor of status quo, and 11 that either were neutral or didn't answer. But one that really stuck out for me was David Hamilton, who is an English professor, retired English professor. And he spoke just lyrically and poetically about the Happy Hollow Park in general. He goes there every day and has for decades. So he, you know, his poetic abilities, I think, were informed by his understanding of the place. And in terms of the ball field, what he said was, or of the field itself, "I'm glad that there is a soccer field and a ball diamond. No reason the two can't coexist. I'd love to see the infield brought back to the diamond. I'd sacrifice a bit of green for that. Who wouldn't prefer to play where a grounder skips across a true infield? That's how you learn to field and throw." So he spoke in a kind of eloquent way about some of the comments we heard, which were not only the preference for playing on a skinned infield, but also the safety aspects of it. The ball is hit more truly on a skinned infield. You don't get the odd hops that you get on a grass infield. And that was noted by a number of people, including some of the folks from the writers workshop. So for those reasons, in addition to the mayor's comments, I would suggest we bring the field back. I would also say the infield back. In terms of the schedule, we've started the preliminary work. That was, I think, a wise decision we made in terms of coupling it with the discussion of the ballpark. So we have preliminary information, public input, on the playground. If we decide to restore the infield, I would ask you to consider that we complete the planning and design documentation in fall and winter of this year. And if it's at all possible to implement next spring, which was when the project was originally scheduled until our last budget, when it was pushed back a year, we could complete this project in 2023. And that would be the end phase of what started in 2016. So it's been a very long, multi-phased project. I think it would be nice now that if we have a direction to try to wrap it up next year and complete it. And I think I am, with the work that we've done, with the restroom and the shelter and the future playground, all the pieces are in place to serve in a way which would complement one another with the field being an interesting piece and all of that. So, you know, it could be something where people rent the shelter with perhaps a soccer emphasis for the ball field, or perhaps a... or perhaps a ball use of the, of the ball field or maybe a mixed-use kind of affair. But in any event, having all of those three elements, four if you include the playground, I think will make for a really very successful neighborhood park. So, so those are my thoughts. Thanks.
I agree with Councilor Thomas and Mayor Teague also mentioned the timeline, that he mentioned a 2020 date and John mentioned 2020, 21. And with all due respect to the Parks and Recs Commission, talking about waiting till we look at the whole park plan, that's a long time to wait. So as John had mentioned, you know, another three, four, five years before we would get this ball field back to its original design, which historically it sounds like it was used for more than just T-ball. And I, I kind of found it ironic, and you'd brought up the Mercer Park earlier item that's on our agenda. I found it ironic that that was on our agenda at the same time we're talking about this and we're talking thousands of dollars and, and it mentioned implementing the, more of a playability to, to their fields. And, and that's exactly what we'd like to see here. And both the mayor and Council Taylor mentioned that these outside groups have volunteered to do maintenance. And so that takes away that whole cost issue. So I, I don't see any reason to, to sit on this very much longer.
I'm just looking for a little bit of clarification, John, on the timeline. Are you proposing that the entire playground reconstruction be moved sooner?
To, yeah, summer of 2023.
Okay, which it's currently, not just, we're not just talking about skinning the ball field then?
It would be combined with the skinning of the ball field. So we would, we would do the rest of the work to be done next, next summer.
And I think the recommendation from Parks and Rec was to keep them combined, but keep it on the current timeline, which is
2024.
2024, yeah.
With, with, and revisit this, the ball field at that time. And it seems we've done quite a bit of work here trying to get public input I don't know that we need anymore.
And I think when we talked about this in June of this year, if I recall the input from Jeff correctly, it was, yes, we can move it up, we just need to figure out what we're trading out, right? Like, so what would drop off the sooner capital improvement project list in order to accommodate shifting this one up a year? Do you have thoughts on that?
I, I don't, other than that this is in the, in the scale of our five-year CIP, a very small project. So I would think we could find the, it's less than $200,000. We could, we could find the funding for that. Again, that, that would be my, my preferred approach. Whether, if, if for, whether it's supply chain issues or funding issues, we need to stay with the night, the 2024 scheme, so be it. But I do think they should be combined, partly because I do want to see the, the drainage issues, if there are any, addressed in the ball field area. Because if you know Happy Hollow, there are, there is standing water there in various locations. And when I see the contract for Mercer, drainage is issued as one of the scope items and that. So I, it did seem to me that if we restore the infield, let's, let's be sure that the grades are correct so we don't have standing water there. Just to be sure.
Thanks for that clarification. And I think, I appreciate that there may be individuals in the community who could help with maintenance, but I don't think that's the same as having kind of like a commitment or a plan for that. And I'd be concerned about, you know, the execution of that just in terms of our cost estimate, which if I understand, Julie, it's about 12,000. We had a memo that said 15,000. I think the most recent memo said 12,000 per year.
Yes, but that would be just to simply skin it and replace it with the agro lime. If you want drainage and, and all the engineering, it would be a little bit more than that, of course.
And that's an ongoing annual cost?
Correct. So the largest cost is that we have to bring staff and equipment from the other locations. And that's where that came from.
And then at the moment when it changes from the grass to the dirt to remove the sod and put that in, I think you estimated another 10,000, is that right?
Correct. That was, yeah.
Staff does it though.
What?
That's if staff does it.
I believe that was right. That was from, I'd have to check back to Jeff's memo on that one.
Or more if it's contracted out is what the
If you did it as part of the overall playground project, obviously there'd be some cost savings because you would already have a contractor on site that would do that kind of groundwork. But as I said, it wouldn't include drainage or anything underneath the field unless we added that to the project.
So what projects are there? I know that we're about to talk about Mercer momentarily, but in addition to that, are there other projects that are slated ahead of this? Just that we actually can get a sense of what we might need to do as a trade-off.
Sure. So the, the two other large park projects that were semi-large projects for next summer are Kiwanis Park, renovating the nature play area. The public meetings for that are actually tomorrow night where we'll be showing options to the neighborhood and talking to the neighborhood with that. And then Hunter's Run, Far West Side, one of the oldest playgrounds we have in the, in the city. And the neighbor, the neighborhood meeting for that is first or second week in November. So both of those are already contracted with our consultants and underway for design and, and community input. The other ones would be the finishing up of the, this year's projects, Whispering Meadows, Chatting Green Park, Court Hill and the Pet Mall Playground.
Maybe, I don't know, Scott can help us out since he's still here too. But I think, Julie, you were just talking about those projects are slated for, so they're under design. We have a contract with the consultant already.
Right.
And we're in FY '23 right now.
And they're budgeted for, we're in, we're in CIP year '22 right now. Those are actually 20, CIP '23 projects.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay.
But we do design and community input the summer prior.
So I'm just trying to get the comparable for this project. The design would happen with this being slated for, it says FY '24. Now I'm not sure.
It would happen about a year from now typically. Although we've already had two pre-master plan meetings, so a lot of that work is, it would be done. We would still want to give them input, time to input on the playground choices, but
Would it be possible to move all of that up a whole year?
Anything's possible if you want to fund it. Yeah.
I think one thing to consider, Julie, you could probably speak to this too, but for the Pet Mall Playground project, we
Will you step to the mic, please?
One thing to consider with the playground equipment is it take, there's a quite a lead time on that. And on the, the Pet Mall Playground, we got delayed by probably six months or more on that one. So I think that's just something to think about as we, you know, move projects around.
I was thinking about that too when you were talking, a discussion about whether to couple or uncouple the ballpark from the playground. I think I would be okay with uncoupling them if staff felt like that made sense in terms of timeline or take staff advice that they need to remain coupled, understanding that could mean it, push it back instead of next, next summer or the summer after.
The staff recommendation would be to keep them coupled, whether you're doing it in '23 or '24, just because both would require a pretty substantial closure of the park. And otherwise, you'd be looking at partial closures over two years rather than, than one. Playground lead times right now are somewhere between 10 and 12, up to 18 months. As Scott mentioned, we were delayed on the, on the Pet Mall project and it's delayed at the moment because some of the parts that came were incorrect and even trying to get remade parts is difficult. Of the three playgrounds we ordered last January, Court Hill is installed, but the contract work is not done around it, so it's not open yet. Whispering Meadows Playground arrived last week and that's about half-installed as of today. And then we're still waiting on the new one for Chatting Green Park. The Glendale one that was the prior year's project was delayed also about eight months with the supply chain issue. So it is a real thing with playground installation and parts, so.
One, one thought I had on that was, and I know you, you've done this on other projects, would be to purchase, put in a purchase order for the play structure as soon as possible as a separate purchase from the, the construction contract. So I mean, if you, if you were able through design to reach a point where you could make that order in, say, January of next year, I think there would still be time to complete the work.
Yeah, good idea. That's actually what we did with all three, all four of those that I just described. We, we did that. We did the purchase order early before we contracted. And we're still with this kind of delay, but yes.
There's no markup, so it's
Correct. We, we purchased them through the government build service prior to the contract almost every time now.
I mean, it's a small play structure. I don't know if that will matter, but anyway.
Do you, do you know what the play structure would be for Happy Hollow already?
So, no. I would tell you it would be similar in size and scope to Franz Holtz Miller or Villa Park or Cardigan Park or Scott, we have several of that kind of size and scope that have gone, gone in recently. And those are pretty standard equipment.
Yeah.
But still, we're still looking at quite a bit of lead time.
Oh, absolutely. No, my question was coming from kind of the first-ish brush with the details of this type of a project for me at any rate. And so I didn't know if this was a situation where you'd have to, there was a lot of public input, for instance, with the Pet Mall. I realize, you know, a lot more investment of, of what the public wants and whatnot. But I didn't know if that was a, a regular part of the procedure is to gather input and if that had been done or because of the size of the park and that there are other models of similar, that it's a little less process-heavy.
Yeah, good question. We've already had the two neighborhood meetings out in the parks. So I think we have quite a bit of input about the playground. If you're comfortable with us choosing the playground equipment based on that and based on the scope of what we've done in these other similar park projects, then that would, that would streamline that quite a bit.
Got it.
I might suggest to the council, and I'm not sure where everybody is, but if there is a desire to, you know, give direction, maybe we give direction if, if that's the majority of the council's will. And then staff can come back and kind of tell us, you know, if, if this is what you're going to have to do to make that possible as far as the financial. So.
Yeah, if I might, I don't, I don't know why it couldn't be a part of your CIP discussions coming up because we wouldn't do playground ordering until January, February, so.
Yeah, I think
I guess I would leave that up to city manager's office as well, but.
Yeah. And, but I think maybe what the, what we need to do, if, if it is the will of the council is to give direction, give a nod that that's where we're going. But yeah, I would agree that there is opportunity to mix and mingle things around as we normally do.
And that would also be kind of the timeframe we would need to know. If you wanted the ball field project to happen next summer, we'd have to close it and re, you know, put T-ball somewhere else, some other things for, for during the construction time. So we would start making those decisions Jan, or January, February as well.
Thank you. All right. Further council thoughts?
Just that it makes sense to do them together. And I'm sort of on the, with the, with the general consensus of reverting to a skinned infield, but I don't know which year makes sense. And I think I would leave that to, tend to leave that to, either for our CIP discussion or, or for staff to try and give us options, as you said.
I'm in favor of also keeping it together and, and reverting, but I would definitely like to know sort of what we have to consider because we've gone through so many different meetings, planning meetings about making sure that, you know, that we're not overtaxing capacity. So I really do want to find out from the staff, like, what would that look like if we wanted to move this forward? What would be the options? So, but I'm in favor of, of doing, of giving that direction.
Agreed. You're in favor as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I, yeah, I just want to clarify again. I'm sorry, because I'm trying to remember our conversation in June. I thought at that point we agreed to move up the public input, but keep the Happy Hollow on the CIP where it was. And now we're revisiting that decision to see what we would trade out for, for Happy Hollow to be moved up a year, yes? Is that what we're talking about?
I think that, and I can, there's been a lot of discussions. So my memory says that we were going to revisit it in two years. And then that meeting, we really didn't revisit it. We didn't, we were waiting. I don't know if we were waiting for
The one in June was when we directed this to happen, I think, over the last couple of months, isn't it?
I, I think we were open to moving it up. That was one reason for having, the meeting in the park was a combined park playground.
If you can move to your mic.
It was, it was a combination in that at the meeting this past summer in the park, we combined preliminary planning for the playground.
Okay, which is what Julie was just speaking to, that, those meetings. Okay, thank you.
So that was to try to
Got it.
lay the groundwork should we have the opportunity.
Want to move it up. Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I just don't want to agree to move it up without having a decision on what we would trade out, so.
Or what opportunities would be there, even if it wasn't a trade.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to assume we're not going to find more money between now and then, but if we do, then yes.
Yeah, you never know.
I don't mean to be flip. I just
No, 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 yeah.
I'm going to assume it'll be a trade-out, but that I would like us to have that conversation of what of the same size would we be pushing back if we're moving this one up?
And the other thing that I would throw out in the, in, as we look at that is, I may no longer live on the west side, but I know that the, the playgrounds there are really few and far between. And the, I, I would not want to move Hunter's Run because it's, it's in really sort of dodgy shape.
Yeah, and I think we've got a recommendation to keep it on the 2024 timeline. So that's what I'd be inclined to do if we were deciding this evening, which it doesn't sound like we're doing.
I, I think we're, you know, signaling to staff that we want to have them, we want to revert, is what I heard the majority of council say. And we're going to couple them together and staff come back at some point with how we can make, with options of making that possible. Is that what you are hearing? All right. So if there's nothing else.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will move on to, I, I don't want to cut anyone off. Anything else? All right. We will move on to the next item, which is our, the info packet 929, September 29th, 2022. We do have a joint entities item on that meeting agenda, which was highlighted by our city clerk in a memo. Wanted to know about any topics of interest.
This may be opening up a can of worms, so y'all can say no. But I was wondering about whether it would be appropriate to start a discussion or introduce the notion again about regional transit, since we talked about it during our strategic plan and that that only happens when talking about, talking with other entities. So I realize that, you know, it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of our own political muscle as, as we talked about. But it seems to me that that's a possible sort of opening gambit is to just reintroduce the idea if, if others are okay with that.
But my, my initial reaction to that is, I would love that conversation, but Better Together 2030 is, I think, going to have that conversation with the entities within Johnson County. Right now, I think it might be in our best interest to talk to other elected officials kind of one-on-one and maybe have the discussions just to, you know, just introduce personal thoughts on how to, you know, how this could play out. And then maybe in conjunction a little bit with Better 30, Better Together 2030, I kind of get a little direction and guidance from them before we take it there. Unless we were going to ask them, which we could, you know, we have the opportunity to put this on there. Do you feel like you can lead us in a discussion? So, I mean, so maybe that would be the thing where we ask Better Together if they feel comfortable. And then if they're saying not now, then we can, you know, but I, I'm ready for
I am more than happy to, you know, if we could put and ask at 2030 to have them kind of work through it since this is, I mean, Better Together 2030 is, you know, the, the conglomeration of all the different 2030 is, you know, the, the conglomeration of all the different, you know, regional areas. So I, it makes sense to me to make the ask. And I just think if they can lead us through that discussion or, or open it up as a conversation and put it on the table, I think that, you know, why not? But I certainly agree with you also about the wisdom of, you know, at the same time or in a parallel way to have, you know, the, the personal conversations as well. But.
Are people in agreement with us having the discussion with Better Together and seeing?
Yes.
And just following up on their lead?
Yeah. And I, I think it could be pretty, pretty brief also, because I think in the conversations that we've had, and primarily, you know, I've been talking around the MPO and looking at the Crandit corridor. But in a lot of those conversations last year and leading into this last spring, I think there's some threshold questions that we could kind of just say as a group, you know, well, what, what does it take to actually have a transit authority, you know, because that takes a certain threshold of population? And what would have to change if that's the route we wanted to go versus agreements that we could have among government agencies to operate a transit system in our collective area, you know, through 2080, that kind of thing. So I, I think it could be very simple, but just kind of say, this is something we've identified as important. And I do also think the, the U of I hospital locating kind of in, almost between entities is a huge piece of that, that we shouldn't look away from. I don't know. Just to put you on the spot as our MPO chair, do you have any thoughts, Sean?
I know. I, I agree with you. And I, I always felt that the, the Crandit line was an opportunity for us to kind of model regional planning on a kind of case level and begin to develop that sensibility through that project. I think, as you were saying, that, you know, North Liberty, Correville, and Iowa City all have kind of different layouts and functions with their transit or lack of transit. So I, I, yeah, I think it's going to be a complicated conversation. So I think we need to be careful. And I like the idea of Better Together as, you know, being involved in the conversation. But I do, I'm hopeful that our Crandit discussion will be fruitful and lead to a better understanding of how regional transit not only is better from a transit standpoint, but it may be better from a land use standpoint. I think that's one of the most important lessons I hope we learn from this, is you can't separate them.
Yeah. So, so Councilwoman Thomas, I'll, I'll try and find and send you this most amazing public transit ad I've ever seen that was, that's put together in, in Denmark. I sent it to Jeff. I'll send it to you. It'd be worth showing at the next meeting. It's fabulous. I have two proposed, quick possible topics. One, to get the auditor's office to talk about voting, early voting, satellite offices and so forth, because that's two days before early voting starts. And two, to bring in, again, Johnson County Public Health to sort of talk about the various, various things going on, flu, COVID, monkeypox, and so forth, just a quick update.
So I'm seeing heads nod. So it seemed like those two, we'll go for the auditor's office for voting related, and then for our public health. I do want to give us at least seven minutes of break before we start at 6:00 PM. As I was hearing the conversation about Better Together 2030 and then the MPO, it almost seemed like we should probably ask both of them to maybe come and just do a little, you know, maybe do a collabora- collaborative effort. Are people okay with that?
I am.
So we'll just ask them both.
Sure.
Anything else? We will, I don't say our USG students today or representative. So
I told Hazel not one.
All right, it is at, it is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting to Order for October 3rd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Burgess?
Here.
Harmson?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
Well, welcome, everyone. We are going to move on to item number 2A, which is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Iowa, in, living in and visiting Iowa City. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from, from fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,980 people in the United States in 2080, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 490, 400,095 100 home fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and three out of five home fires, death result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas half of the home fires death result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas Iowa City first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Iowa City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively reminds us to look for places fire could start, listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and learn two ways out of every room. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, hereby proclaim October 9th, 15, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city and urge everyone to install smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts during Fire Prevention Week 2022 and year round. And to receive this today is Fire Marshal Brian Gier. So we'll welcome him at this time.
Thank you, sir. I suppose I should probably speak a little bit here on this. Fire Prevention Week was started by the National Fire Protection Association in 1922 to commemorate the great Chicago Fire that occurred on, in 1871, on the 9th of that, that of October. So they've historically, Fire Prevention Week is, is on the week that has the 9th in it. So in 1925, President Calvin Coolidge, he actually proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, which makes it the longest-running public health observance in the country. So that's, that's kind of neat there, too. And what, what we heard in the proclamation, there's a few things that, that I'd like to just talk about. The, the theme for this year is "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape." So things that we want to make sure of is work with your family or the people you live with to try to make a plan on how to get out of the house in case there was a fire. I actually was at a fire yesterday just across from my house in North Liberty. So, I mean, I was woken up and people know I'm on the fire department, so they, you know, I had to go over and assist a little bit with there. And fortunately, the person that was in the house was able to get out. But it, it's something that when, when you get in a, in a fire, it is really dark. It's, the smoke is, is really bad for you and just a few breaths of it. And, and sometimes it's, it's heated as well. It can be disastrous. So make sure you have a plan that, that you can, you can get out of the house. Once you're out of the house, have a meeting place. You want to be able to have accountability for the people that are with you. So we'll do that. Smoke alarms, I hope everybody has those. You know, check those every month. Push the little test button on it, make sure it works. If they're older than 10 years old, you may have to pull them down to look at the bottom to see the date. They should be replaced. And no, no two ways out of every room. If it's your bedroom, obviously the door's the, the primary way. If, if that's blocked or you feel heat out there, you have a window to get out of. Always look for two ways to get out. And, you know, make sure you, you practice some of this stuff, too, especially if you've got younger kids. Just make sure that, that you can get them out and be safe. Other than that, thank you all for what you do and, and hopefully you'll, you'll stay fire safe. And, and I think that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks to you and all of the firemen and, or the fire staff that work. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing is we're starting back into the schools next week. We usually have a, a little skit or a show. So each of the, each of the elementaries K through three are going to get the opportunity to see that live again. The last two years, it was all virtual and it didn't quite touch as much as it should have. So this, this should be good to get back to somewhat normal.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to item number 2B, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city recognizes the fact that Iowa City is built upon the homelands of Native American nations to whom we owe our existence, commitment, and dedication, and without whom the building of the city would not have been possible. And whereas the area of Iowa City was within the homelands of Iowa, Mesquite, and Sauk. And because history is complex and time goes far beyond memory, we also acknowledge the ancient connections of many other indigenous people here. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the United Nations-sponsored international conferences on discrimination against indigenous populations in the Americas. And whereas the City of Iowa City recognizes a shared responsibility to honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, traditions, and cultural contributions. Whereas the city strongly supports that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous people of the region. And whereas the city is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income equality, income inequality, and exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas the city implores our residents to commit to understanding and addressing injustices impacting indigenous people. And whereas the city strongly encourages educational institutions, businesses, and other organizations to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and join the city in committing to opposing systemic racism and injustices. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the second Monday of October each year as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Iowa City. And to receive this, I understood that we had someone online to receive this, but I don't see. So Sakawas, Nobis, if you are present online, please raise your hand. I don't see her, but she is the founder and executor, and the executive director of the Great Plains Action Society, who was a part of the indigenous community. And just thank her for all that she do within our community and through her organization. All right, we will move on to items number three through seven, which is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
No move, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. And I'm going to invite Julie Sidell-Johnson up to just talk about one item from here, which is 6F. And 6F, that title is Mercer Park Ballfields and Courts. Welcome.
Great. So what this action will do is start the process on public improvements next summer at Mercer Baseball Fields and the Mercer Pickleball Courts, Tennis Courts, and hopefully City Park Tennis Courts. The funding for the project is the 2023 CIP project. There's 950,000 for the baseball field complex and 175 originally placed in there for the City Park Tennis Courts. As we've gone through the recreation facilities and program master plan, we've really been, gotten a lot of feedback about the pickleball courts at Mercer. So we are shifting some of the focus to also include the, those courts. The baseball improvements, things like fencing, lighting, playability of the fields, but then also work to the, kind of the plaza concessions, fan, fan area in the middle of the fields, potentially re, realigning Field Number Four. I have to tell you that our list of, of potential wants for this project is much larger than the budget. So what this will do, once we get our, our consultant onboard, is start our stakeholder meetings, both with the school district, the baseball associations, the pickleball players, tennis enthusiasts, to prioritize which things get done. Meaning, there'll be some done on each of these areas, but the amount done on each may vary a little bit. For the pickleball courts specifically at Mercer, we're well aware of the cracking on the courts and believe that that will probably take a full, a full replacement of this underground surfacing there. Now, it probably does not do enough to add a roof over the top or some of the other amenities that the pickleball players have asked for, but we will be talking with them and working with them on potentially some fundraising or some other things for site furnishings and, and that sort of thing. Same with the baseball fields, the list is much longer than probably what the budget will accomplish. So we will look at things for safety, playability, energy efficiency, fan experience, those kind of things, accessibility paths first, and then work our way down the list with those. Does that answer? Okay.
Quick question on the pickleball courts. So is that actual repairs or replacement or whatever, would that be next summer or the summer after?
So this money is for the construction year of 2023. So our hope is to get through the, the stakeholder meetings and design and bid it out January, February. And so it would be construction next summer, early fall, and the baseball season will dictate some of that. But similar to what we just talked about with other projects, if we can couple those together into one contract, I think that would be better.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Julie. All right. Anyone from the public like to address a topic that is on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I just had a quick comment about 6B, the lobbyist, if that, if this would be an appropriate time to do that. We had in the past taken some time, I think, in a work session to talk about topics that we would like the lobbyists to follow up on. And so I'd like us to maybe keep that in mind and schedule a time, a work session to, if, if we have some, especially you, Janice, if you have some of those topics that we want the lobbyists to keep an eye on and our legislatures to keep an eye on. And on that note, there was a list in there about their, their scope of services. And it mentioned regularly communicating with the city. And I'm not sure whether, do they do that? Do they talk to the city manager? Because it mentioned also, like, attending up to two city council meetings. I don't recall them ever doing that. But I'd, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see better communication between the council, the city, and the lobbyists. But that's all.
Yeah, I can speak to that just a bit because I'm actually going to be the one that's going to be focused out of the city manager's office, working with the state lobbyists.
Okay, good.
So we will have an opportunity to have some legislative priorities that the council will vote on. I think this is something that's been done in the past. And so we will be looking at that. And, and there'll be, from what I understand, pretty robust communications during the legislative session with the city manager's office and, and the consultants. So.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Any other discussion by council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We're on to item number eight, which is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak about a topic that is not listed on our agenda. We will allow three minutes for each person to speak. If you're online, please raise your hand. And in person, there is a sticker in the back if you want to fill it out, or you can, yep, place it in the basket. Or there's a sign-in sheet at the desk, at the podium. Welcome. Please give us your name and the city you're from.
Great, thank you. Amy Kritkowski, here from Iowa City, again, to express my ongoing continued support for keeping the current design of City Park Pool. I have another letter that I would like to give to you. If, if I could, it's, it's wet. It was in my bag and the water bottle, so you can just pretend that it's been swimming. It's sort of appropriate for that. I apologize. If you'd like me to send you some non-wet copies, I'll be happy to do that. I just, I, I, I keep coming back to these meetings and this one-way communication process is just, it's a little frustrating. And given the community, you know, output of support for all the pools, I think it would be a really, really great idea if the council, Parks and Rec, or whomever can explain what is, what the process is or where we're at in the process, what's going to happen next, when things are going to be voted on. Because rumors are, are abounding. And I know you can't, you know, respond to me, but I did, you know, I've, I've sent three letters now to the city council. I have, I've emailed people. I've spoken to a few of you. I sent emails out to the rest of the city council who I had not yet spoken to. I haven't heard back. That's fine. We're all very busy. I totally get it. But it would be really great for the community to understand exactly what's going on. And this, what this letter gets into is something that I mentioned at the last council meeting, which is that I think you're making a very, very big, important decision for something that's going to impact this community. And it doesn't seem to me, from the information that I've read, that you have all the information you need in order to make a, a responsible decision. It seems to me that we don't really know exactly what's wrong with the City Park Pool. So instead of just throwing the whole pool out, maybe a little bit more work is done to try to, you know, needs to be done to, to figure out exactly what's going on with the pool. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
No move. Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Would anyone else like to make a comment during this time on any agenda item, on any item that is not on our agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one online or in person. We're going to move on to item number nine, which are planning and zoning matters in 9A as a rezoning Cardinal Heights. This ordinance conditionally rezoned an approximately 27.68 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road, from interim development research park zone to low-density multifamily zone with a planned development overlay. And could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
No move, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. In person, please step to the podium. Seeing no one, council discussion.
I'd just like to comment again on this item. His, I, I believe that as members of the city council, I've heard many of you over time say how important it is for you to hear from your constituents. You would like them to know and feel that their, their voice matters and that you're listening to them. And I believe that it's a critical part of being an elected official, to be able to listen to what is being said. And we offer many ways for the public to offer their input, listening posts, public hearings, public comment, time during council meetings and commission meetings, various surveys, and of course emails, letters, and phone calls. And for the most part, I, I feel that this is an appropriate development for this area, and I'm happy to see growth on the West Side. However, I don't feel that the concerns raised by the nearby residents were adequately addressed. They raised many valid, valid concerns, and it was not, not stated that it was NIMBY. We'd heard that many times, several projects about, not in my backyard. But they did not say that. They didn't have that kind of attitude, nor were they primarily concerned about their property values. They focused on concerns about stormwater drainage and reduction of the woodlands. And frankly, I'm concerned about the loss of woodlands. The developer admits to a drastic removal of woodland that impacts 55.8%. 12.7.8 acres out of 22.9 acres would be removed. And I would be willing to accept this development subject to changes that eliminate the development on the north slope, which would preserve those woodlands, which would then show some environmental responsibility on the part of the developer. And I would ask my fellow council members to please listen to these concerns raised by these community members and pause this development until their concerns can be adequately addressed. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passes six to one. All right. So we are on to item number 9B, which is a preliminary plat, Planned Development Overlay and Sensitive Areas Development Plan, Cardinal Heights. Resolution approving the preliminary plat, Planned Development Overlay and Sensitive Areas Development Plan of the Cardinal Heights subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Can I get a motion to approve?
No move.
Second, Harmson.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Harmson. And we're going to welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. I'll just have a brief presentation. This particular application goes along with the one, the rezoning that you just completed a moment ago. It's the preliminary plat for the area bounded in white outline here. Again, the applicant is Navigate Homes, and they've been requesting the rezoning and now this final, the subdivision of this, and so the plating of this into Card, into Cardinal Point Heights. That would eventually allow for the development of 44 attached single-family homes or duplexes, four-town home apartments on one lot and a multifamily apartment consisting of approximately 30 units. The proposed preliminary plat contains the lots to facilitate that development. This is showing the plat oriented north-south as we're kind of accustomed to seeing, even though most of their submittal was more of an east-west orientation. It does show the development of the street network connecting to existing road network to the west, allowing for future connection to the east. No real connections to the north and south due to the location of sensitive features, as was mentioned, woodlands, and the fact that the development to the north of it did not leave any stub streets to connect to. And it is already developed with a loop street to the north. Again, here's the same subdivision tilted now, so that the north is to the left-hand side. Just talking a little bit about cul-de-sacs, while the comprehensive plan and our subdivision ordinances do discourage cul-de-sacs, they do allow for them in certain circumstances, primarily when it can be demonstrated that there is a reason not to disturb other areas with a street cut-through, in areas where there's environmental constraints like sensitive areas or limitations to connecting to other streets, as I've mentioned. No real need to connect to, to the north when there's not a stub street to connect to. The design of this cul-de-sac was within the length limits. There's a 900-foot limit on cul-de-sacs in length when they do occur. This one is only 560 feet in length. When we review subdivisions, we look at comprehensive plan compliance, as well as any conditions that were included in a rezoning, in this case, the rezoning that just occurred. And then as we do, also review the ordinances for subdivision design. This has been found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as part of that rezoning process. The density of development here is much lower than the comprehensive plan envisions, primarily because of those sensitive features and avoiding them and orienting development away from those. Talking about conditions that have been placed, there was only one condition on that rezoning that just occurred. It had to do with cost sharing for future road improvements, and that would be accomplished in the future with a payment of those fees before issuance of building permit. And we also reviewed the built, the primary, the preliminary plat subdivision code. We've done that as part of the rezoning in part for the open space and the design of the overlay district plan, so I won't get into that. And just to highlight that we are here at the green segment in the development process, having completed the rezoning now. This is the preliminary plat. It would be followed eventually with a final plat that would just come to council, and then eventually staff review of site, site plans for the multifamily developments, and then issuance of building permits. So based on a review of the relevant criteria for subdivisions, staff did recommend approval with no conditions. The Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that and also forwarded a recommendation of approval from their August 3rd meeting. That concludes staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Hearing none. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step forward at this time. If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
All right. Motion passed at six to one. Item number 10 is Roret South Trunk Sanitary Sewer. Resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interests necessary for construction of the Roret South Trunk Sanitary Sewer Project. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome our staff. Welcome, Joe.
Joe Alter from Engineering, and I'm the project engineer on this project. So I'll just walk you through the, a little bit about the project overall, and then we'll talk about the property acquisition. So this project's located from almost at Kiwanis Park, Abbey and Bury. It's going to go down Abbey Lane, across Mormon Trek Boulevard, along a existing sewer easement that is south of that is south of Rushmore Drive, and then will cross under Highway 218. This project generally includes about a half-mile of 30-inch diameter trunk sewer. We'll be using trenchless construction underneath the highway, per the DOT's recommendation. We'll have new sanitary manholes, new sanitary sewer service connections on Abbey and along the permanent easement on the west side of Mormon Trek. We'll be abandoning the old collection line that was on Abbey. Storm sewer pipe, as well as water main features and storm inletts will all be improved. The street will be completely replaced on Abbey, and a big portion of the first part of Rushmore will also be replaced. We'll have driveway apron replacements, several sidewalk improvements. So to get access to the west side of Highway 218, we cannot access it off of the DOT properties. The, the grades on the side of the highway, plus the restrictions of the use of the highway, don't allow us to do that. We do need access to both sides of the highway to be able to set our materials on one side, be able to bore through, and then pull the new pipe through the casing, install the casing and install the new sewer pipe. And so we have been in contact with the Steve Carson, the Carson family, as well as Allen Development that owns this property now. And they suggested the route that we're taking, that's highlighted here in blue. The, the blue rectangle towards the highway, that's the lay-down area we'll be proposing. And then the final area there is the area for the contractor to be able to set up their equipment to do the directional, the boring and the directional drilling across the, the highway. This is just kind of another look at the exact same thing, but it, it highlights that path that we're taking for the temporary easement. Again, this is required because it's ag, it's agricultural land, and we're doing an acquisition on that. Just a little bit about the schedule, so a lot of this is still a little bit up in the air, but we would be aiming towards a late fall or early winter bid on this. We would like to start construction in April and finish in November. So, and Strand and Associates has been our design engineer on this. So that ends my presentation.
Could you please sort of give everyone a sense of the, the contact that you've already had, because I know it's been extensive with the homeowners in the area?
Yeah. So this is particularly, this item's about the agricultural land, but we have, to answer your question on the other property, so we, we have been, on this property, we've been, we've been in contact with both the Carson family, as well as Jesse Allen. On the east side of the highway, west of Mormon Trek, is the Mormon Trek Village Condominiums Association, Homeowners Association. We've had several meetings with them. Two of them have been onsite, two of them have been virtual. So they've been invited to both of the public information meetings that we've had for all of the neighbors on this project. There is only one temporary easement that's along Abbey, and that was at the request of that particular property owner. They requested us to extend their private sewer up into past where our permanent easement goes to accommodate avoiding a large pin oak tree in their, in their yard. So that, that was at the request of that particular property owner.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Joe, for the route of the easement that's through the agricultural land, you mentioned that that was kind of recommended by the landowners. Can you just speak to what types of factors are involved in locating that?
It's pretty much the ridge.
Okay.
So there's a divide in the property, and they wanted us to stay up on the drier, the, the high ground is going to be drier. They're also going to be looking at doing some work on that property at some point, and this, this aligned with some of the, the areas that they were going to be doing, some of their, doing some of their work, maybe starting next year. I don't know. That, again, they have to go through a process to get to that point. They're not quite there yet.
Because this is just for kind of driving our equipment in and out to get to the west side of the highway?
Exactly. Yeah. Trucks and equipment. I imagine some of it they'll be unloading at the very entrance and driving it in. Other things they'll have to drive all the way down to unload the pipe and the rock and the material that they're going to have to get down there.
Great. Thank you.
One of the themes that we've had tonight is talking about supply chain issues. Does you, do you have any concerns about the timeline that is in place right now?
I think we're all concerned about that. The particular materials that we were using at this point, we're, we're not, we're not getting any sense of that we're not going to be able to get those materials. We, we specifically went away from certain materials that we were considering because they're just not available. So the materials that we're using generally are pretty readily accessible. So there's always a chance that that won't be the case. We, we do have a long construction window for this. Neither designer nor the city staff thinks it's going to take from April till November necessarily, but we give longer timeframes. First, to get a little better bid so that the contractor has some flexibility when they want to fit that in. And the second would be if we do get some delays at the front end, we still have a good window of opportunity in the late spring, summer, and early fall to still get this done.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in the auditorium, please come forth. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess. Second, Alter.
Council discussion?
This is really essential to, to the possibility of further development on the west side. It's sort of the gateway to, to more development. It's not just, and it's been, I think it's been in the planning for a long time.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11 is American Legion Road Speed Limit. Ordinance amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter III, and Title Rules of the Road, Section VI, and Title Speed Restrictions, Subsection B, and Title Exceptions to Eliminate the 35-Mile Per Hour Speed Zone for American Legion Road. This is second consideration and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand, and if you're present in the council chambers, please step forward. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're at item number 12, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 12A is Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission has two vacancies to fill on expired terms effective upon appointment through June 30, 2023. Correspondence, yeah, all right. So could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Taylor. Second, Burgess.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Council discussion about appointments. We had, and I guess I, I kind of want to just say that we have two for six applicants. And council, we know that we had a recent resignation. So we could actually go forth with two individuals, should we choose, or if we wanted to only go with one, then I think we probably need to make that clarification now, and, and maybe get more individuals or more applicants time. So are we wanting to go with two applicants at this time, or see how everything plays out with who we promote first?
I can appreciate wanting to give folks some more time to be aware that we have the second vacancy, but I'm also aware of the fact that, that this poor commission has just had so many obstacles and roadblocks, and, and we really need to, to get them in full swing. And so I would be in favor of doing the two at this time. I would, I would concur, and that we also have some really good applicants, or that it's not like we're sort of struggling with no one who appears qualified.
So I hear two going forward. Is there any other thoughts on the other way? I don't have strong feelings either way. I think your first statement was, you know, allow more, more individuals time to recognize that there is an opening. But I'm, I'm okay with seeing if we, there's two individuals at least that I, I thought would be great, but let's see where people are.
The one name that, I, I, there are a number of people I would actually be interested in, but the one name that, that was the strongest, one of the strongest to me was Marie Krebs.
I agree with that.
She has a really, really strong background, also comes with some strong recommendations. I agree, and she was recommended by Christina Nobles, who's a current commission member, and I think that always speaks highly of a current commission member feels that that's strongly about someone that they think they can work with them. So I would agree, Marie would be a great fit.
I agree.
As do I.
Okay. Marie Krebs, sounds like she has majority. Anyone else?
There were a couple of others, but one person who I thought could be an interesting and, and good fit on the commission was Lauren Merritt.
I'd had her as a option, a great option.
Yeah. I think she has an interesting background. I think that additionally, you know, she has clearly, you know, had a long-time career, and I think that that could speak well to kind of the current dynamic, to, to sort of bring, you know, again, get an additional perspective, with someone who has a lot of experience in civil service, and I think that she would be very good.
Any other thoughts? We've heard about Marie, and I do support Lauren. Any other individuals?
Can support Lauren as well. I can support Lauren. I like Catherine Tremson, like she would be a really good fit also, but I, I would go with Lauren if everyone else is.
You know, also a shout out to, honorable mention for Sir Anya Subramanian, if I pronounced that correctly, who did, I think, put on there, the choice was for HCDC anyway, so that might be something to keep in mind should we have an opening on that particular commission.
And, and yeah, she was one of my selections as well. All right. It sounded like we do have majority support for Maria Krebs and Lauren Merritt, as I'm looking side by side. And could I get a motion to appoint? Now, let me see what their term limits are. Oh, they're all on the same term limit. Yes. All right. So could I get a motion to appoint Marie Krebs and Lauren Merritt to the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Onto item number 13. Announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027. Board of Appeals, two vacancies to fill a five-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027. One vacancy for a licensed plumber and one vacancy for a HBA representative or qualified by experience or training. Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025. Human Rights Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025. Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill a four-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2026. Public Art Advisory Committee at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 8, 2022. Item number 14 is announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Planning and zoning commission, one vacancy to fill an on-expire term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 20, 22, October 25, 2022. Airport zoning board of adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport zoning commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic preservation commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are at item number 15, which is city council information, and we can give any board updates or any thing that is for the good of the public.
Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to fill in on the ECI cog meeting this past week. It was a fairly short meeting, but a couple things that jumped out that I think that would be nice for the council members to have on their radar mostly involved issues with transportation and transit, transit sorts of issues. So there are some, some federal bills that are, have gotten approval, but they're working through some of the, you know, the details, which always takes a little bit of time. Some stuff that have to do with some safe streets initiatives, which are designed to lower fatalities on roadways, so there might be something in the near future for if we have road projects or street projects that involve, you know, reconfiguring, reengineering dangerous intersections. The other one involved some of the, some of the new bills that have been moving through at the federal level that involve a support for more e-charging stations. I think there's just made some headlines recently. Again, all the details of those are, are not, you know, hammered out yet, but we do know that there will be some priority given to certain corridors, I-80, I-380, other interstates in Iowa, but those are, you know, the ones that affect us most directly within a near proximity. I think the anticipation is that a lot of those requests for grants will come from private business owners, Casey's, Come and Go, Quikstar, those kinds of things. But there may also be some opportunities for other entities such as local government to apply for some funding to put in charging stations. So that might be, again, all those details are not available yet, but those are things that ECI cog staff said they were looking into, and so it's not a bad thing to have on our radar screen. That's all.
So we had a meeting, the JEXA board, the, one of the, they have been, the head of JEXA has been coordinating with Sarah Nelson of Community to, as both before the rollout of the 988 number and continuing, and they hope in the near future to be, also be able to have some community staff sit in with their, with their dispatchers to start, to start understanding how this would all work. So there's, it's not, it's not a, it's not, they're not paired up yet, but they're in communication and will continue to be.
Well, I'll give a quick little update. Last week, our deputy city manager and I were in Waterloo. We just got back on Friday from being at the Iowa League of Cities. It was a great opportunity, not only for information...
It was a great opportunity, not only for information, which was an information overload, but just to be amongst other city elected officials, as well as staff from other cities, and have some great conversations. I did do a tour where we went through the neighborhoods and saw, it was really their affordable housing tour, and there was a lot of great takeaways. They had the info, the information sessions, there were a lot of topics, some of which we would anticipate would have been a part of it, which was childcare. That's something that a lot of people chimed in on, both large and small cities, that had conversations about, you know, what can we expect not only from the governor, you know, the state, but also what are some of the things that we can anticipate coming from federal, local government, and even what are ways that we can be more innovative. Childcare, childcare workers, of course, rose to the top of one of the things that we need to address, but it was a great opportunity to hear a lot from different presenters. The other thing is that they always have their legislative priorities that they kind of put before, before our legislators. There's nothing too surprising, I'm not going to go through it now, because there's actually two sets where part of the Metro Coalition, which they also did their legislative priorities, and Iowa League of Cities, and what typically happens, because I know Counselor Taylor brought this up, the council will get to set our city legislative agenda. Typically, we do that November, definitely by December, oftentimes pre-COVID. We would invite our legislators here to just have a conversation as well. That opportunity still might, you know, present itself this time around, but it was great. I would encourage people to, if your schedule will allow it, to maybe next year, mark your calendar to attend the next year's Iowa League of Cities. Whether you're going to remain on council or not, I think there's a lot, because I know we'll be up for another reelection, but I think there's a lot to gain from those opportunities. While I'm talking about just opportunities, the Iowa, I'm sorry, in Washington DC, I do go to, at the end of January, and that is to the Mayor's Innovation Project. It sounds like it's just for mayors, but it's not. It's for elected officials, and so I would encourage any individual to connect with our city clerk, Kelly, about that opportunity, because it's just a lot of great things happening when you're getting around and listening to what other cities are doing that are so innovative. And I'll tell you that we have a lot of things that we can share as well on some of the things that we're doing here. So just keep an eye out for some of these opportunities, and I will hope that in the future we'll have a little more participation.
You're also going to mention the gala last week?
Yeah, yes, yes. So there were, so on last Thursday, while we were doing double duty, one in Waterloo, both Redman and I, and Counsel Weiner, and some city staff, we also had some commission members and other members of the public that represented the city at the African-American Museum, I'm going to blank on the name, History Makers Gala. And our very own first African-American mayor, Ross Wilburn, was, he made, he made, he made history, and he was, was, he received a reward. There were other people from our community that also received this award. It was a beautiful event, well-attended, it was packed, the spirits were high, and it was just a great way to celebrate people throughout the state that are making great change that are African-American.
It's been an incredibly busy couple of weeks, I think, for the entire community, but I'm really happy to say that I got to represent the city at the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition and talk about the great things that we are doing throughout, in terms of our affordable housing solutions. And it was just an amazing experience to be able to sort of sit there and talk about the multiple kinds of projects and, and ways that we're trying to address affordable housing. It is both a source of frustration because we need it so much, but there is a lot that we can be proud of, and so it was a really cool moment to be able to represent Iowa City in that way, and to talk about what we have done as a council and in partnership with, with people who are out there doing the work every day. So that was a really wonderful opportunity. Additionally, the Iowa Women's Foundation had their annual luncheon, and it was fantastic because this was 25 years that the IWF has been giving out grants for different nonprofits that are there to help strengthen and bolster women and girls in Iowa. This was also the 50th anniversary of Title IX, and as a part of that, the entire luncheon was there to celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Christine Grant and her last doctoral student, who is now the Director of Diversity and Inclusion for the NCAA, was able to speak, and I believe her name was Dr. Kimberly Miller, I may be wrong on that, but it was a lovely, really heartwarming, and, and also just empowering and important luncheon, because you could just see how every year the grind goes on, and, you know, this, this organization really has put so many people to the, helped so many people become aware of obstacles and challenges, and yet opportunities for women and girls in Iowa. So that was a really wonderful thing, and I got to actually speak with and hang out with staff in a more informal way than this kind of a setup, and so that was another really great opportunity. And then my final bit, too, is then later that evening, the City of Literature right now is in the middle of their two-week book festival, which is longer than it's ever been before, but they had so many events, they stretched it out. So kudos to John Kenyon and staff for the work that they're putting in on this. I went to the Paul Engel Award reception and talk that was with Rebecca Slotnick, who is an absolute pioneer and warrior, a climate warrior. So much of the work that she does now, she said, is very deliberately, it is, everything that she does now is with this eye on this decade of what she calls decision-making for, for the climate. And so she's a very staunch, strong advocate, and it was really exceptional to, to hear her speak. The book festival is actually going on through October 13th, so anybody who loves literature and hearing people talk about literature, check out the events and go, go partake.
There was also the gala for the Center for Worker Justice, which was also a really lovely event, so it's celebrating 10 years of their existence and work for the community and work for the, those particularly who have suffered from wage theft and various other similar issues, so, and featured our former mayor, Pro Tem, obviously.
All right, here are nothing else. We're going to move on to item number 16, which is reports on items from city staff. We're going to go to our city manager's office.
Nothing for you today this evening?
All right, our city attorney?
Nothing for me either, thank you, Mayor.
City clerk? All right. Item number 17 is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Okay. Second.
All right, moved by Harmsen, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. All right.